Well, it's 6:00 PM. Let's go ahead and get started. Welcome, everybody, to the Wednesday, December 6, 2023, formal meeting of the Iowa City Planning and Zoning Commission. Commissioners present are Townsend, Quellhorst, Craig, Elliott, Wade, and Hench, with Padron possibly being present via Zoom, but not so far. First item up after roll call is public discussion of any item not on the agenda. Is there anybody in the public who would like to address the commission on a topic that's not on tonight's agenda? If you would like to address something, please just come up to the podium. Seeing no one come up to the podium. I see eager faces, but no one coming up. So we'll go to comprehensive plan and rezoning items. First item up is number four, case number CPA 23-0002. Location is north of I-80, west of North Dodge Street at the end of Moss Ridge Road. This is a request to set a public hearing for December 20th, 2023, on a proposed amendment to change the comprehensive plan future land use map from office research development center to intensive commercial for approximately 61.72 acres of property. Is there going to be a staff report tonight? Or that be at that night?
Not tonight.
So before we have a motion for that, could I check to see if we're going to have a quorum for that date of December 20th? Is there anybody that knows they will not, knows or suspects they will not be here on the 20th? Okay. Scott, do you know?
I'll be here.
I'll be here.
So it looks like we'll have a quorum. So could I have a motion to set a public hearing for December 20th, 2023, at 6:00 PM in this location of Emma Harvett Hall?
So moved.
Second.
So a motion by Quellhorst and a second by Townsend. Discussion. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of setting that date and time for the public hearing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the motion passes unanimously, six to zero. Next item up is case number CPA 23-001, 0001. Location, 1201 West Benton Street. This is a public hearing on a proposed amendment to change the comprehensive plan future land use map from two to eight dwelling units per acre to eight to 16 dwelling units per acre in an amendment to change the Southwest District Plan Future Land Use Map from single family duplex residential to low density multifamily residential for approximately 0.78 acres of property. To begin with, I believe that Commissioner Elliott is going to recuse herself because of her participation in the Oaknoll Foundation Board. So, thank you. So is there any presentation or just go straight to the public hearing?
Well, the presentation will be part of the public hearing.
Oh, yeah, we didn't have that last time, did we? Sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. Kirk Lehman, Associate Planner, to talk about 1201 West Benton Street and proposed comprehensive plan amendment. The subject property is located on the west side of town, just south of the Oaknoll campus. It's currently occupied by a single home, and it's surrounded by low-density, single-family residential neighborhoods. Thank you. The proposal is to expand the Oaknoll campus with a smaller-scale multifamily use on proposed site that would be assisted group living, so not multifamily assisted group living, but the proposal would change the future land use category to low-density multifamily residential, which would allow such a use. In terms of the zoning, the zoning generally reflects the uses that are allowed. So to the north, you have medium and high-density multifamily residential zones that are in a planned development overlay. And then to the southeast and west, you have the low-density, single-family residential zone RS5. That's also what the current, the property is currently zoned, but there's a, or an additional concurrent amendment to the zoning code that would change that to RM12 or low-density multifamily residential. Here you can see the future land use map with the proposed change. It's a little hard to see since it's a citywide map. Needless to say, there's a small square that shows that low-density multifamily residential, or in this case, eight to 16 dwelling units per acre. As I noted, this is part of a two-part application that includes both a comp plan amendment and rezoning. The proposed changes would allow the assisted group living use. They're proposing that it would house up to 12 residents in a single-story building on the subject property. So this amendment is CPA 23-001, and then the rezoning that's affiliated with it is In terms of those changes, I mentioned the comprehensive plan. It would also change the Southwest District Plan, which this property is within that planning district, from single-family duplex residential to low-density multifamily residential. It's somewhat similar to a previous expansion of the Oaknoll campus that occurred in 2012. That one happened west across George Street and allowed 69 units of planned development housing in a medium-density multifamily residential use, so it was a more substantial expansion at that time. That one also had a five-story building that was component versus this one story. So it is similar in that we've seen the Oaknoll campus expand in the past. This one is a lower-scale version of that. Again, the image to the left is the future land use map. An easier map to see is that Southwest District Plan map. The proposed property is within the Benton Hill neighborhood in the Roosevelt sub-area of the Southwest District Plan, so we like neighborhoods nestled within neighborhoods in the way that it's organized. The black circle again shows that subject property with the change. This plan was initially adopted in 2002. It's been updated a couple times since then, including that Oaknoll expansion. There's been some other changes to the south that have also allowed additional multifamily uses that you've seen. In terms of an analysis of the comp plan, I'll discuss that later as we get into the approval criteria as well, but just this is kind of the background as to what's being So for comprehensive plan amendments, there are two approval criteria that the city considers. They're found in Section 14, 8D, 3D of the city code. The first is that circumstances have changed and/or additional information or factors have come to light such that the proposed amendment is in the public interest. And the second is that the proposed amendment will be compatible with other policies or provisions of the comprehensive plan, including any district plans or their amendments. So now I'll go through those two factors and our analysis that was included in the staff report. In terms of changing circumstances, the population of residents age 65 and over has nearly doubled since the Southwest Plan was initially adopted in 2002. As of 2000, the census showed that there were approximately 62,000 residents in Iowa City at that time. About 4,500 of them were age 65-plus, which is about 7% of the population. In 2020, we have about 75,000 residents now, so 20 years later, about 8,600 of them are age 65 or greater, which is about 12%. So not quite a doubling of that senior population, but it has increased, and we expect it to continue growing and aging, especially as the baby boomer generation continues to reach those retirement and senior years. So as a result of that, the city will continue to need additional assisted living and nursing capacity within our housing market to accommodate that growing demand. In terms of the proposed change, the future land use map, low-density multifamily generally does allow assisted group living uses. It allows multifamily uses as well. This future land use category pretty much directly correlates to our RM12 zone. That's part of the proposed rezoning. But it is important to keep in mind that this provides a variety of housing options that are available under this zone, so careful attention needs to be paid to the site and the building design to ensure that it is compatible with adjacent uses and also with all the uses that are allowed within that zone specifically. But overall, these trends do indicate that there's a public interest in reviewing the property's future land use category. The second looks at whether it's compatible with other policies of the comprehensive plan. Generally, multifamily housing should be located in areas with good access to urban services. Our comprehensive plan especially encourages it along arterial corridors such as Benton Street, but the district plan does note that there are concerns about appropriate transitions between low-density, single-family neighborhoods and high-density, multifamily neighborhoods. So this subject property that's being proposed would be a low-density, multifamily neighborhood. It is a little different, but there are significant concentrations of high-density, multifamily neighborhoods in this area. So within the Roosevelt sub-area especially, this plan also encourages households of all types to live close to the university in downtown. That includes elderly populations in addition to other folks, such as single folks, families, et cetera. But like I had noted, there are nearby areas that have been developed with appropriately-designed higher-density uses that are adjacent to those lower-density, single-family uses. I already mentioned the Oaknoll expansion that happened in 2012. Another example of that was around 2004, the Hawk Ridge property developed, which had a planned development overlay. It was medium-density, multifamily residential next to single-family uses, but they tried to carefully design the setbacks to be appropriate with the adjacent, single-family residential neighborhoods. So we have seen this in the past. We believe that the proposed amendment does achieve a similar result, especially as we're looking at a low-density, multifamily use. I did also want to mention some recommended actions that were included in the Southwest District Plan that we considered. So there's the note about the avoiding concentrations of high-density, multifamily zoning adjacent to low-density. I kind of mentioned already how this is looking at a low-density next to a low-density, so we believe that that's an appropriate use of future land use planning. There are also two that relate to multifamily residential design standards within the Roosevelt sub-area. These were incorporated with our 2005 zoning code update that occurred after this plan was initially adopted, so a lot of the things related to the design of the site are addressed with our site development standards that are incorporated within our multifamily zones. We also have some recommended, or a recommended condition that Madison will cover in her presentation of the proposed rezoning. And on top of that, there are several goals within the comprehensive plan writ large, not the district plan, that the proposed amendment would meet. So that includes goals like ensuring that infill development is compatible and complementary to the surrounding neighborhood, identifying and supporting infill development and redevelopment opportunities where services and infrastructure is already in place, and then also promoting housing design and features that allow people to age in place, thinking of things like universal design, et cetera. So based on this analysis, staff does believe that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. As a result, staff does recommend approval of CPA 23-001 to change the future land use map in both the comp plan and within the Southwest District Plan. I did want to note that we have received some correspondence. You have some included in your packet. Most of the correspondence we received has been in support of it, but we did receive a late correspondence that is included at your spots as well, and that one was opposed to it. So with that being the case, in terms of next steps, upon a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, a public hearing would be scheduled with city council. That would be for both the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning. Terms of, in terms of an anticipated timeline, we would expect council to set a public hearing for both items at their December 12 meeting, with that hearing being held on January 2nd. With the comprehensive plan amendment, it would only require one meeting, so that could be adopted by council at that January 2 meeting. For the rezoning, it would be the first of three considerations, with the final consideration potentially being held at the earliest on February 6. So that is when we would expect something like that to be adopted by council if they don't consolidate their readings at some point in the future. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the proposed amendment.
A question for you, Kirk, mostly as an educational piece for members of the public. Could you define what a future land use map is and how it is used by your department?
Sure. So a future land use map provides a general idea of what types of uses might be appropriate for various pieces of land in the future, looking forward in the next 20 to 40 years, kind of depends on the timeframe that you're talking about. It is intended as guidance. It is not law like a zoning code. So a zoning code identifies specific pieces of property and says, this is what can be used here. Future land use map is more based on the aspirations of the community and the goals that the city is trying to reach, and then it tries to provide an example of how that may be reached accordingly. So it's an aspirational document that provides guidance as those legal frameworks such as zoning or subdivisions are considered.
All right. Thank you. And I just asked to remind the commissioners, when you speak, please speak into your microphone. There's been some complaints in the past of people not being able to hear commissioners speak. So any questions for staff from the commission?
I have a question about parking. I mean, if we were looking at a residential unit that had 12 living spaces in it, what would the parking be required?
So it would all depend on the zone and the uses, in the case of multifamily, and the number of bedrooms. If we're talking about a multifamily zone that's zoned RM12, you know, you're talking one to two spaces per unit. If you're talking about assisted group living, it's based on other factors that include staff on site, and I think it's one-third of the occupants of the site. Generally, those things are covered by the zoning code, and the minimums or maximums that are required are guided by the zoning. It's not something that is typically considered at the stage of a comp plan amendment, since they would have to meet our code to be able to build whatever they want to build.
I'm just thinking in the bigger picture that I don't think five spaces is very much when you consider that there's no parking on Benton Street, and I realize that the residents are unlikely to have their own vehicles and be driving, but you've got staff, you've got visitors, you know? If three kids come to see their mom, which mine better when I'm someplace, you know, there's three of the five spaces are taken up, and there's no place else to park. And if down the road, Oaknoll says, you know, we decided we don't like this small thing, we're going to give up, it's too expensive to staff, or whatever, they abandon it, what's it going to become? And so I'm just trying to think of the big picture and the long term here, and I have a couple of concerns. So.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Kirk, I think you mentioned that under the proposed zoning classification, careful attention must be paid to the site and building design. So how's that enforced by the city?
So as part of a comprehensive plan amendment, it's not really part of that consideration. Really, what we're looking at is the long-term use of the land, what uses might be appropriate there. Typically, you would see that addressed in conditions within a rezoning. So if there's a conditional zoning code amendment, or excuse me, conditional zoning agreement that's adopted, that's a legally enforceable way that you can enforce careful site design. A lot of the time, you'll see that with, like, I think Hawks Ridge used their OPD, their planned development overlay plan to address that. A lot of the times, you see it in conditional zoning agreements. We also have our zoning code designed to try and make sure that those sorts of factors are considered, so looking at things like our multifamily site development standards, which include things like making sure that an entrance faces a street, making sure that parking is screened from public right-of-way and not between the building and the street, trying to think about the bulk and the layout of the building, those sorts of things. Those are also baked into our zoning code, depending on kind of where the considerations are. Parking's another thing that's baked into our zoning code.
You know, are there any conditions associated with the proposed zoning code amendment?
There is.
Yeah, I thought it was substantial compliance with the...
With the footprint and...
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's, it's based around the footprint of the building, I believe.
Bulk and scale, general compliance with the development concept.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions from commission members?
Yeah, I got a question. So what triggers this? Is it based on a request from the property owner? For example, if you look at the properties further to the east, you go from like high-density, and then you go to single-family, and now you have this pop-up as a low-density, multifamily. So you kind of get, create this little bit of gap versus it smoothly transitioning?
Yeah, it would be based around, well, sometimes they can be city-initiated comp plan amendments. You'll see those in cases like with the South District Form-Based Code, where we're looking at a broad area and thinking about it long-term. However, property owners can say, I think the future use of my property might be more appropriate to be X, Y, or Z based on these factors within the comprehensive plan. You might, and in addition, I would add, sometimes a comp plan amendment isn't needed to change the zoning because there is flexibility baked into the way that the comprehensive plan is an aspirational document. It provides guidance. So if you look within the comprehensive plan, not the Southwest District Plan, but the comprehensive plan itself, it specifically notes that, you know, at the corners of arterials, you should also consider higher-density or higher-intensity uses. It might be appropriate for commercial or multifamily without actually requiring a comp plan amendment. In this case, there's pretty specific guidance in the Southwest District Plan, and so we felt that a comp plan amendment was appropriate for this subject property.
So, and with this, with the multifamily, low-density pairing up to single-family, does that change like the setback requirements and such, or will that be discussed in the rezoning request?
So it would not affect the setbacks other than, within the zoning code, the low-density, multifamily zone has standards about if you're going to be more than two stories, I believe, then you have to be set back a certain distance from adjacent properties. So that's something that's baked into the zoning code. There's standards about not having balconies facing adjacent properties if you're within a certain distance, so there are standards that depend or that are influenced by having lower-density zones next to it.
Right. But it doesn't, so the RM12 versus the RS5 setback requirements, it honors the RM12 and doesn't?
It'd be based on the RM12 setback requirements. So I believe it's 10 feet for side setbacks, which is instead of five feet for RS5.
Any further questions for members of the commission?
I got a process question.
Okay.
Just directed to them or you?
I don't know. Go ahead.
The, these are kind of co-mingled, item five and item six. So do we vote on five?
We do, first, first, this first one's on the map.
Uh huh, right.
To change the map, so we vote on it. We have the public hearing, then we vote on it, then we go on item number six, which is the rezoning.
And I should mention that for the rezoning, to be consistent with the comp plan, the comp plan amendment would have to be approved.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Now is the opportunity for members of the public to speak to the commission on this particular application. If you'd like to speak, please come forward, state your name, and make sure you sign in. Everybody will be limited to five minutes, and then you'll give a second opportunity for two minutes if you so wish. Address the comments to the commission. Don't speak to members back towards members in the audience or ask questions of staff. This is just your opportunity to have a one-way conversation with us, to share with us your opinions. And we'll start off first with the applicant or the applicant's representative, and just so that members of the public know, they're allowed more than five minutes since it is their request and their application, so.
Brian Belk, Axiom Consultants, here representing the applicant, who is also here and will speak as well tonight in terms of the owner and the architect. Thank you for considering this comprehensive plan map amendment. It is a little interesting because it is tied into the rezoning, so I know some of those things, for instance, with regards to the architectural style of the building, the bulk, the size of it, and everything else, I believe some of those slides would be in the rezoning on that next item as well. But just wanted to let you know, I'll touch on a couple of things, and then I'll let Oaknoll and Architect OPN speak as well. But this has been a very thought-out process since Oaknoll has acquired that parcel in terms of what can fit in this area, knowing the single-family residential around it, and also serve the needs of the community and what Oaknoll is seeing, which is why you're seeing what is a nursing facility, but in a, and just really a large, single-family residential, single-level-type-home facility. And that architecture has gone into place that you would see really fits that well. In terms of the site, similarly, that has been thought out very, very much in terms of centralizing that so that we have the most setbacks and buffer around it from all sides, specifically east, west, and south, where you'll see other residential homes, but also fitting in with the existing trees and tree lines to save pretty much almost all or as much as possible of the trees that are currently on the parcel, again, to act as additional buffer and space there. Driveway is already existing and following that same alignment in terms of onto Benton Street, so really not a lot of change there. As noted, we would, you know, get into additional details on parking once we got to that site plan process. Obviously, the concept that was part of the comp plan and rezoning is simply that, it's a concept, but do understand that there would be certainly a lot less need for parking than you would certainly see in a typical multifamily, being that it's more of a nursing-type facility. But that has been discussed in terms of number of employees and things like that. Yeah, otherwise, just wanted to note that, yeah, we really looked in depth at the topography of this site as well in terms of the drive and the spacing so that it doesn't stick out at all with the building itself. Certainly, if there's any questions or even on the next item as it gets into the architectural jacks here from OPN, but otherwise, I'm going to let Kim kind of come up from Oaknoll and speak to the needs of this type of use of facility.
I'm very pleased to be here. My name is Kim Bergen Jackson. I'm the administrator at Oaknoll, and I'm a nurse by training. So the vision of what this small house would look like is my mission to sort of explain that to you. So we are, why now? We find ourselves in a position where Oaknoll needs to grow as our independent living numbers grow, our assisted living and health care facility numbers need to grow as well, but we don't want to build a regular, old nursing home. We want to do something innovative and creative and more home-like, and this example of a small house would bring just what we need it to for the 12 people that would be living there. They would not be driving. They would be nursing facility level of care, so they would be assisted, completely dependent on staff, but living in a home-like environment. Part of the reason that the small house movement makes sense to me right now is that we experienced COVID as a nation, and one of the things we learned is that we need independent rooms, private rooms, and small group settings, small bubbles, to create a better infection-prevention plan. And so Oaknoll was very fortunate during the pandemic because we had different areas for people to be in and lots of private rooms. So people don't want to live in long corridors and models of nursing homes that were created initially after the hospital model. We have been moving more and more towards a home-like environment, and so this project is exciting to me, to be able to build a house with 12 bedrooms for people to live with a large, open, concept dining so they can see the food being prepared, they can weigh in on the menus and the grocery list as it's completed, they can help participate in household tasks like we all do. It's very normalizing as you age to have things to do around your house. Just between us, I hope there'll be a dog there sometime, or at least a cat. I like dogs better. The staff will have access to park at the house, and if there's an excess, the staff have access to park at Oaknoll across the street. So I like that the position is right across the street from the main campus. I like all of the trees and how it will feel like a neighborhood for people. I can see lots of Sunday suppers sitting around a big kitchen table, and so really the intention behind this is to just provide a more home-like environment for the residents that we serve. That's what they're starting to ask for, and that's our responsibility to provide that for them. That's it.
Hi, Kim.
Hi.
Will this be licensed as a skilled nursing facility?
Yes.
So none of the people will be driving, though?
None of them will be driving, yeah.
And I'm just presuming here, but would parking for staff be across the street on the north side?
Well, there are, it depends. So at night, I'm going to say the staff are going to park at the house. There's a one-car garage. They could park in the garage, or they could park in one of the other accessible stalls. But in the daytime, the staff are probably going to park on the Oaknoll property and come across the street.
All right, thank you.
Yep, and we'll have space out in front of the house in case we need a driver for transportation for medical appointments, or on the offhand, we need an ambulance.
I mean, you can tell from what I've said before that parking is a concern of mine. I assume these people will have visitors. I mean, another concern is Benton Street and having to cross Benton Street. That, I mean, my understanding of the Oaknoll model, and one of the beauties of it is that if you have a partner, you... and one of the beauties of it is that if you have a partner, you can, you know, move to Oaknoll when you're both in very decent health, and if one of you needs a higher level of care, then they can move into that, and you're close by to visit that person, sometimes multiple times a day. So that older, I mean, in good health, but older person is going to have to cross Benton Street, right there, not quite at the crest of the hill, but almost, to get over there. It's just, it's difficult for me to see how that's going to work well.
I can appreciate your concerns. We've had concerns about Benton Street for a long time, but I think that we'll be able to manage that. So, yeah, people will visit. I hope lots of people, all of the kids will visit, and we'll make, we'll accommodate that. If we see it in action and it's not working with the parking spaces that we have, we'll figure out a bus to go back and forth across the street if it's too hard to get people across the street. But it is directly across the street from a street, so.
George Street.
From George Street, yeah. And we've really kind of figured out, originally, the model was all under one roof, but we have figured out over time with our east expansion campus and our apartment condos at One University Place, that we don't really need to be under one roof to still provide the Oaknoll services across the board. So we have people driving every day to visit loved ones now, and it seems to work.
Not too long ago, we had a proposal to add a similar kind of care units at the east side, Oaknoll. Is, how is this similar to that, or different?
Yeah.
And is that still in the plans?
The Oaknoll East Campus is just strictly independent living right now, and it would be nice if we had assisted living to add to that campus. That is still part of our plan. We have lots of plans, but.
So it would be a similar level of care at the east side?
It would be assisted living level of care at the east campus, and it would be nursing facility level of care.
Okay.
At the main campus.
All right. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
And your architect, or Steve's coming up?
Hello, Commission. I am Steve Rowe. I'm CEO at Oaknoll. I've been employed and serving the residents of Oaknoll for 24 years. We are excited about this option. When the property became available to us, it came from the children of somebody, they were actually the grandchildren of somebody who we cared for about 20 years ago. Their mother passed away unexpectedly in the property, and when they inherited it, they really didn't have a need for it. They reached out to Oaknoll, and we jumped at the opportunity because of its proximity to our campus. And then, as we started to explore options for this property, and knowing the need for nursing care that we have, we really wanted to explore that small-house model of nursing, and believed that this would be an ideal situation. It would be nice if Benton Street didn't exist between the main campus and 1201 West Benton, but it is a property on Benton Street, so we will deal with that. And as Kim mentioned, like, one of the options for dealing with that, if we need to, will be to transport somebody, one of the shortest transports ever, but getting into a vehicle, like at our front door on the other side of Benton Street, and delivering them to, safely to the property at 1201 West Benton. The question about Oaknoll East Assisted Living, we did work through this process and receive a rezoning per approval for that potential project. We have not started anything there yet, primarily because it's just so expensive, the construction cost for that particular location relative to the revenue that will be generated from a 16-unit assisted living. We have just not been able to find a way to justify financially how to move forward with that. So this is an alternative, potentially, that will help us with managing the care of the residents who we have. I think that's everything that I wanted to say. Any questions?
On the issue of traffic on Benton Street, and I should have brought this up when Brian is there, so I'm speaking to you, but I'm really speaking to Brian.
Yes.
It's more of an engineering question. Have your engineers ever talked to the city about traffic calming measures on Benton? Because that's a really busy street with a lot of speed, and maybe there needs to be some controlled pedestrian crossing there at George or something. So that might be a first step.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, Steve. And then your architect?
Good evening, Commission. I'm Jack Top with OPN Architects. We're very excited about this project. Was introduced to this this summer, and we've been talking and discussing about all the options. It was very well explained by the former people that have stood up and talked about it. I only have a couple of additional points about it, that Oaknoll has been looking at other options around town to try and see if they could expand, even beyond east campus, to see about their services and being able to service their residents that they have now. This design of the facility on 1201 Benton is of one-story. It's not intended to be multi-story, so it has a very small presence on the site. It has also been looked at quite intensively about the vegetation around the site, to try and keep the existing vegetation as much as possible. There's some old-grown trees and shrubs and bushes and things like that that are quite nice to keep, and we would like to make sure that we can achieve that. Just one other thing is that this particular model of housing and care is only requiring two full-time staff, so there isn't multiple people going back and forth between their existing facilities and to this place or to this facility. That would be two full-time staff that would be monitoring and taking care of the folks at this home.
All right, Jack. A couple of questions. These are actually more appropriate for the rezoning, but I must just ask them now. What would be the height for this facility? The maximum height of the building?
We're looking at 15 feet.
And if it was a single-family residential, what would the height of a typical home be?
Well, it could vary with the pitched roof to 15 or 20 feet.
So, very similar. I mean, it would be taller than a, what's the square footage of this building, and what's the square footage of the lot that it's on?
Gross square footage is 87, 8720.
And the lot?
The lot, I don't have the lot size, but I have a lot coverage of 26%.
Okay. So that's very good. Any other questions for Jack? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The lot size is almost 34,000 square feet.
Okay, thank you.
33,792.
Okay, very good. This is opportunity for the public. Is there anybody else for the applicant? That's everybody? Okay. Now is the opportunity for the public to speak to the commission on this. So if anybody that's present would like to speak to the commission of this application, please come forward, state your name, and sign in.
My name is Jordan Conrad, and I live at 905 Weber Street, which is right around the corner from this proposed property. And I'm here tonight to oppose the rezoning of this property. Our neighborhood is a residential neighborhood, and I believe that changing the zoning in this particular property would start, would lead to future development beyond residential use. I believe this is just the first step in that. The area is already marked by high-density apartment complexes, the facility at Oaknoll, and I think this would further that development beyond residential use. There are a few other issues I have with changing the zoning, and then the building particularly. And like Commissioner Craig had mentioned, parking, you're talking about an 8,000-plus-square-foot property on three-quarters of an acre. It takes up a rather large footprint on that property. But zoning in that area is always been a problem. Oaknoll regularly has events, and their parking, or the people that show up to those events spill over into that road. I can't remember the road name, George Street. They're parked along George Street, even though there's very clear, no parking signs there, no parking anytime, and their guests regularly park there. Their guests regularly fill down into Weber Street, way down into Weber Street and back up the opposing hillside, even though there's no parking signs there, Monday through Friday, nine to five. And it creates a significant traffic problem in our residential neighborhood. On top of that, Benton is a very dangerous street, especially where that house is located. Even after the resurfacing project that they just completed weeks ago, really, now people are flying through there at 45 miles per hour fairly regularly. It's a problem, I cross that road twice a day to go to work. It's a problem for me, and I think adding even more density in that property is going to create additional problems. You know, one of the criteria that I heard was that circumstances had to change. And I'm happy that Iowa City has a very diverse population, and that we have a healthy number of older adults in the community. But I don't think that it's necessary to put them in that location. They have an east campus, that they can build this same facility over there. They can build out in Road or on the west side where there's current development going on. I think that adding and expanding their campus into a residential neighborhood is a really bad idea, and I strongly oppose this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. Is there anyone else that would like to address this? Second call for, first time around, for anybody to like to address the commission of this application?
Hi. My name's Kate Magzamin Conrad. I also live at 905 Weber Street. I just, I wanted to add that the way that I found out about this project was actually through our neighbor that lives at the top of the hill, the corner of Weber and Brenton. And Oaknoll has approached him for a very long time and continues to approach, to purchase his house. The person who talked to our neighbor has a list of other addresses, and the person who came to talk to him told him that the idea behind this is to acquire each of these properties one at a time, so that they can put more massive facility on that property. Obviously, I didn't talk to the person myself, so this is hearsay, but I do have a list of, I think there's a statement that they, there's a paper that they try to get people to sign on to, saying that we agree Oaknoll is a good neighbor, and we want this facility in our neighborhood. I don't know if they produced that document with signatures on it, but it seems, at least from looking at that list that I actually have, and having this conversation with my neighbor, that there's more in plan here than just this single facility. And while I have concerns at the outset about a single facility, for all the reasons listed, including lines of cars on George Street with little signs that say "event parking," an even bigger concern is to get kind of the foot in the door here and say, "Oh, look, here, like, as in 2012, here's another example of how we've rezoned these properties." So that eventually, Oaknoll extends and takes over our, a huge portion of our neighborhood. You know, we would prefer, as would our neighbors, to exist in this low-density neighborhood that we have currently. And I think that the facility itself is a fantastic idea. I just would like to see it built in zones that are already accommodating that kind of structure. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kate. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? Anybody like to come around for the second time for a two-minute time limit? Steve?
Sorry, I forgot to sign in the first time, so I'm going to do that as well. I just feel a need to reply to the last comment that was hearsay. It is categorically untrue. We have not approached any property owners along there, along that street. We invited people to a meeting to tell them what we would like to do. We have not extended any offers to anyone, nor do we have any plans to do that. The gentleman in question, I did meet with him personally in my office. I got the impression that he was interested in selling to us at some point, but it was not something that I initiated.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Last call. Seeing no one come up, we'll close the public hearing. Could I have a motion on this particular application?
I'll move approval, just so we can talk about it.
I second Townsend.
So you have a motion by Craig, second by Townsend. Is that motion for approval? For approval on this application? Since you made the motion, you get to speak first on discussion?
Oh, boy.
That's what happens when you.
That's what you speak for. You can always defer.
From the comments that I've made, I think people can see I'm very conflicted here, and I think there are good reasons both ways. My biggest concerns are the traffic and Benton Street. I do think Oaknoll has the resources to do what they said, and accommodate people at Oaknoll who need to get to the other side of the street. I think traffic calming on Benton Street would be, also be a good idea. You know, we've been, you know, fool me once, shame on you, or fool me twice, shame on me. And it's not an Oaknoll issue. It's a, people come to us, they ask for rezoning based on a proposal of something, and then we find out a year later, for good reasons, that their project has changed significantly. And I am in favor of this particular project, and I would reluctantly support it with cautions. I am concerned that if it doesn't come to fruition, that we have changed the comp plan and possibly the rezoning, and something that I wouldn't be in favor of is going to go in there. And we don't get to say that now. We have to go with what's in front of us. And so there, now you can just guess how I'm going to vote.
All right.
I just have a question. The unit itself takes up a very small portion of the land.
Twenty-six percent. About a fourth, yeah.
So why, isn't there more parking built into that project?
I think right now that I would caution you from, away from considering their specific plan. This really is, as Susan said, about changing the land use map from two to eight dwelling units to eight to 16 dwelling units.
Okay.
Assume that their project is not going to go forward, as you consider this application.
So there could possibly be 16 units on that, in that same space.
Right.
Where they're planning for one at this point.
Right. Right.
And we have nothing to say about that.
Well, the rezoning is where there is, you know, you would impose conditions on any rezoning. But it is, really is a two-step process, and the comp plan is more conceptual and should be a guide for any user of this property or any rezoning application for this property.
So at this point, if we're only talking about one unit, why are we rezoning for a possible 16 units?
Well, so this is the comp plan, right? So it would allow for a greater range of zoning designations for this property. So that's the question that you're being asked to decide at this stage.
I'll just go ahead and go next. I have really strong feelings, and I've been very consistent about this over time, that any development for older adult living in Iowa City in particular is a good thing, and we need more of it. To follow up what Susan said, if, I might have been the only person on the commission then, but if people remember the rezoning for Grand Living when they came and, you know, the Grand Living at Bridgewater is now built in North Corville, you know, that beautiful structure that was going to go on the, that open area by St. Andrew Presbyterian Church, and then all the neighbors at Walnut Ridge in particular, but in general, came to complain. And so now we don't have that beautiful facility in Iowa City. And I just feel like this is something I really strongly support. And this is, of course, just the map. We're not, we shouldn't get into minutia of the rezoning because on the, our particular concerns, we can cover as a condition under the rezoning. But just as the concept, I fully enthusiastically support this, and I'll vote that way.
I guess I'll go next. I agree, I would support this amendment. I think it's an important cause, and I also think it's in a reasonable place for RM12 zoning, particularly given the other, you know, large structures on Benton and that this is an arterial street that doesn't have, you know, say, the access road considerations that were, you know, mentioned in the, I don't recall if it was the district plan or the comp plan. I think it was the district plan. But I do think that at some point, you know, whether in this proposed amendment or in a broader revisitation of the district plan, it'd be helpful to clarify the extent of the development that we're willing to permit in this area to provide some comfort and predictability for the people that live there, particularly west of George Street. You know, the whole purpose of the comp plan and the district plan is that you're supposed to give people notice of what's going to happen in their neighborhoods and where they live. And when we're doing this in sort of a piecemeal fashion where, you know, you bring a change to the comp plan along with a change to the zoning code, you know, I don't think you get quite the degree of advanced notice that might be ideal. So, you know, for those reasons, I would support this request here today, but I think I would be reluctant to support similar requests in the future.
Chad?
I'll also vote in favor of it. You know, I understand the neighbors' concerns because I kind of foresee the transition area from the east to this location. So, but this does provide kind of a transitory area to the single-family residential, to a higher-density Oaknoll location. I'm going to set all the use cases for the facility aside because it's really, this is just a comp plan item, so I'll stay in my lane.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the commission members? Seeing none, seeing none, we have a motion by Craig, second by Townsend, for approval of this particular application. All those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the motion is approved 6-0. Next item on the agenda, item number six, case number REZ23-0008, location 1201 West Benton Street. This is an application for a rezoning of approximately 0.78 acres of land from single, from low-density, single-family residential RS5 zone to low-density, multifamily residential RM12 zone. In Madison, I hear that you're speaking tonight for us?
Yep. Yes.
Before we proceed, you called the vote 6-0. I think there's only five.
You're correct.
Okay.
5-0. Commissioner Padron is absent, and Commissioner Elliott has recused herself. Thank you for catching that error.
All right. Madison Conley, Associate Planner. I'm here today to talk about agenda item number six, which includes the rezoning 23008, location 1201 West Benton Street. And this application is for a rezoning of approximately 0.78 acres of land from low-density, single-family residential RS5 zone to low-density, multifamily residential RM12 zone. So previously Kirk covered these images and just explained that there is an existing single-family home at the moment. And across the street, we have Oaknoll's main campus. And then this property in the square is bordered by single-family homes. And you can see that here, the zoning RS5 is bordered from the east, west, and south. And there's that RM20, RM12 residential multifamily, high-density with an overlay across the street to the north. And just for the record, this rezoning is in tandem with the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, CPA 0001, that Kirk mentioned earlier. So the proposed zone for this location would go to RM12, which is the low-density, multifamily residential zone. This zone is created to provide a diverse variety of housing options in neighborhoods throughout the city. This zone particularly allows multifamily, assisted group living, community service, general educational facilities, and others, whether that be through permission, provisional use, or special exception. Additionally, compliance with the multifamily site development standards in 142B6 of the Iowa City zoning code would apply to any development going into the RM12 zone. The maximum density listed here, you can see multifamily, the maximum would be 12 units allowed in this particular zone. Additionally, assisted group living facility would have a maximum of 45 roomers, and that calculation comes from the provisional use section in the code. Then we have maximum height of 35 feet. Additionally, like Kirk mentioned, there are some requirements, depending on how close the proposed structure is to an existing, single-family structure, whether it be 15 feet, there would be a maximum limit of two and a half stories for that proposed structure. Here we have the development concept provided by the applicant. So as you can see on the left-hand side, there is the footprint, site plan concept for the proposed assisted group living facility. There is, it would house 12 residents in 12 units. Like we mentioned, the square footage of this would be 8,720 square feet and covers approximately 26% of the lot. And then you can see on here, there's the five parking spaces with the access to West Benton Street. On the right-hand side is a 3D model of how this would look on the property. And now we'll go ahead and get into the general development approval criteria for a rezoning. This would consist of looking at consistency with the comprehensive plan, and number two, compatibility with the existing neighborhood. So to start, Kirk mentioned the future land use map and explained to you all what that entails and how staff utilizes that. So that comprehensive plan amendment was hoping to go from two to eight dwelling units to eight to 16 dwelling units per acre. And alternatively, the Southwest District plan would be updated as well as a result, going from single-family duplex residential to low-density, multifamily. So in the comprehensive plan, there are three parts that support this type of proposed development and rezoning. One, ensure that infill development is compatible and complementary to the surrounding neighborhood. Then we have identify and support infill development and redevelopment opportunities in areas where services and infrastructure are already in place, and promote housing design and features that allow people to age in place, such as universal design. Additionally, we know that Benton Street is an arterial street corridor with access to city services. And we also include a recommended condition that I will get into in a moment. And this plan does encourage high-quality, multifamily housing compatible with the surrounding development in order to meet the needs of a variety of households. So in addition to the comprehensive plan, we have the Southwest District plan. And I believe Kirk did note there was some concerns in that plan, one being high-density, multifamily zoning is excessive for the area. Number two, transition is lacking between low-density, single-family and high-density, multifamily zones. The third, building bulk and scale, parking lot size, bright lights, and noise adjacent to single-family homes can be something to consider. And then there are some recommended actions stated in the Southwest District plan to help combat this, such as avoid concentrations of high-density, multifamily zoning directly adjacent to low-density, single-family zones, facilitate down zoning multifamily property where appropriate, and apply the multifamily residential design standards contained in Section 145H5N of the city code to the Roosevelt sub-area. And staff is recommending a condition that there should be general compliance with the footprint and scale of the concept plan to ensure compatibility with the existing neighborhood Additionally, to talk about the compatibility with existing neighborhood, we note that this is seen as an extension of Oaknoll's main campus, which exists to the north. It is bordered by single-family homes to the east, west, and south, and it just includes development concept notes such as it being 8,720 square feet, a one-story, and can house 12 residents. And although it is, although this rezoning is kind of out of the mainstream from others, the recommended condition that staff has created would help to ensure compliance with the existing neighborhood uses because regulating that building bulk and scale would be one of the ways we can ensure that this development meets the existing neighborhood development pattern. And then again, I just have some pictures of the concept, and I'll go through those. Here's the existing, single-family home on the property. And here's the proposed concept. Overall, staff recommends an approval of the rezoning 23008, a proposal to rezone approximately 0.78 acres of property located at 1201 West Benton Street, from low-density, single-family residential RS5 zone to low-density, multifamily RM12 zone in order to establish an assisted group living facility, subject to the following condition: general compliance with the footprint and scale of the concept plan to ensure compatibility with the existing neighborhood development And like Kirk went through, we have the next steps. I'm going to go through these. We can probably just leave these since Kirk already addressed those. So, yeah, any questions?
I have one for you.
Sure.
For Madison. Maybe this is a Sarah question, but I'll start with you first, and she can just pipe in. So the condition of general compliance of the footprint and scale of the concept plan, one concern I'm sure we all share is that if this is rezoned RM12, and Oaknoll, for some reason, decides they can't proceed with the plan they have now, and decides, well, why don't we just build some apartments there? So what does that actually mean, that general compliance to the footprint and scale of the building? Does that mean that if it's 10% deviation from that, 50% deviation, then the rezoning is no longer valid? I just need some reassurance of what that actually means.
For staff, I believe that it means that we aim for the concept to comply with what we find in the code regarding multifamily development standards, specifically the building bulk and scale, making sure that whatever development does come in would comply and be compatible with the existing character of the neighborhood. So, and I don't know if you want to get more into that?
We really focused on bulk and scale of, for the condition to ensure that we don't, we wouldn't allow a large block-scale apartment building. As Madison mentioned, this property would allow 12 units. We're not, through the, through the condition, we're not restricting uses, we're not restricting number of units. But we are, what we're trying to say is that if you can fit your project within approximately 8,700 square feet in a one-story building, you can do your project. There may be some flexibility. Let's say they propose a one-and-a-half-story building. Staff would have to look at that and see, is that, is that generally in compliance? Maybe it's not 8,700 square feet, maybe it's 88. So there is some flexibility. We've used general compliance, so it doesn't have to look exactly like this. But it needs to meet the intent of the condition that it's not going to, it's going to fit in terms of bulk and scale with the existing neighbors.
Because like the RM12 maximum height is 35 feet. Jack, the architect, said that this facility would be about 15 feet tall. So they would be limited to something essentially, you know, 15 to 20 feet if they wanted to change it for some reason. They're not going to get the 35 feet.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And if the commission wants to put a cap on that, we could add that to the condition. If they want it to be more specific, we could, we could add specificity to the condition.
I am interested in doing that.
Okay.
Yeah. Is that something that staff considered, or what's, you know, staff's recommendation with regard to more restrictive conditions?
I, you know, it can go either way. It provides specificity, but it also, it can act as a constraint, especially if something changes in the future. As long as we can ensure that the condition that you're proposing is to meet a public need caused by the rezoning, and it can be supported, I think staff would be in support of adding specificity.
Because I think it does, because the whole thing about character in a neighborhood, if we put a 35-foot building there versus a 15-foot building, 15-foot's consistent with single-family residential dwelling. So I think it's very similar to a characteristic building. 35 feet, I feel that would be out of character.
I will say that RS5 zone has a maximum height of 35 feet as well. So it's not, this zone doesn't allow a higher building than, as it's currently zoned.
Okay.
So how was your question different from the one I asked earlier?
Well, because then we were talking about the map, now we're talking about the rezoning.
Okay.
So before it was general concepts, this is, we're talking about specific conditions.
Okay.
So I have a question. I think we all kind of share a general sentiment that, you know, this project appears to be tasteful and well-done, but also have concerns that, you know, we don't want to deviate too far from it. So, you know, with that in mind, would staff have any conditions that you would recommend, you know, to not cause too many problems for future owners or conveyances, but at the same time, be sure that we're sticking, you know, relatively clearly to what's been proposed here today?
I think, I think we have, our recommended condition is general compliance in terms of bulk and scale. And when we say bulk and scale, we're talking about the height and the footprint. If the commission wants to limit it to a certain number of stories, that's something that could be considered. There was discussions regarding landscaping and preserve, tree preservation, that is not included in our condition. So it's not something that, you know, preserving those trees would not be required in the future.
Yeah, I think that's pretty reasonable. We've done that. This is really not the place for discussion, but in other times, we've always had the city forester sign off on the landscaping plan. That seems reasonable to do again as a condition for this. So just throwing that out to people, so.
I would like to see a compliance related to the height. And I would like to say it has to be a single, given the size of the building, I think in this neighborhood, it should not be more than one story. And so...
What's the current zoning height allowed?
35 feet.
Okay. So currently, somebody could build a 35-foot building right there without getting a rezoning.
I will say that the difference is, is that... I, I will say that the difference is, is that the current zoning only allows single-family and duplex uses. So 35 feet, you're getting more with the RM12, you're getting more with that 35 feet.
But they could put a two-story duplex in.
Or a three-story duplex, yeah.
Well, and when they do, the character of the neighborhood changes. And so, you know, but I don't think this is the project that should change it.
Oh, I agree with that. I, I love this concept. I just want to deal with facts for what the current zoning is, so. Any other staff discussion?
I got one question. It's kind of, this is from my understanding. Oftentimes, like with a new regular residential multi-unit building, it has some kind of fee-in-lieu or affordable-type unit requirement. Can you help me to understand what has affordability requirements versus what does not?
I, I think you might be thinking about riverfront crossings. So there is no affordability requirement here.
That's specific to riverfront?
Yes, yep.
I have a question then for, since we're talking about conditions, we have that one condition. And I'm interested in the condition of the landscaping plan, having that signed off by the city forester, because I think that makes sense to try to maintain as many trees as we can, you know, to stay with the character of the neighborhood. But the other one is, it's a real concern and given how busy Benton Street is, five parking space does seem a little light. And a condition of, and this would be an engineering question, so it's really a Brian question about there is, if there's room for additional parking spaces to be constructed if it's indicated, but I'm still kind of hung, hung up on, we're expecting people to walk across Benton Street. I don't think there's any pedestrian crossings there. I don't see in the pictures any pedestrian painted things. So it, is that a condition we could add about the engineer working with the city, about making sure we have actually a designated pedestrian crossing? Because it's, the whole neighborhood needs it. But the problem is, is these all look like they're sort of mid-block, you know, from George Street to the south side, that's a mid-block crossing on the south side. And from Weber to the north, that's a mid-block crossing to the north. So I'm not sure how the city engineering staff would look at that, but I think it's pretty reasonable for the safety of the visitors, guests, employees, and then just for the neighborhood, that, that needs to be investigated. A way to have a designated parking, crossing area that the city has signed off on, so just for the safety of everybody.
So I think we're kind of still in the staff question period.
Yeah, I just sort of ask if that's a condition we can add. I guess I didn't ask it in question.
To me, that seems like something we would want staff input on, you know, from our traffic planners. And so that might invite a deferral.
I feel that we've said enough things tonight about our concerns about crossing Benton Street that this will get carried over. I mean, we talked about, is there traffic calming on Benton Street? I mean, I think.
I mean, it's an arterial.
I mean, I trust that you will pass it on.
Right, yes.
I mean, even if this wasn't built, I think Benton Street could use some more pedestrian crossings that you didn't feel like you were taking your life in your hands to get across the street.
So I guess as this conversation evolves, that might be something that you consider. If you want more feedback from staff on that, you know, because this is an arterial, I would hesitate to recommend imposing it as a condition of the rezoning without further information from, from staff.
Then a staff question then. When we, during the rezoning public hearing portion, and I presume we'll speak to the applicant's engineer again, could we just request that they investigate this question that we have? We don't have to add it as a condition.
Sure.
Okay.
I guess alternatively, if it's something the commission wants to, to investigate with our colleagues, you could defer it and we could bring this back.
I'm comfortable that the city staff will.
So am I.
Do the right thing here.
But I do feel it's really important, so thank you.
How long has it not been done?
Ever, it appears. Any other questions for staff from the commissioners? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the hearing on this. So the applicant or the applicant's representative, if you come forward, we're on this particular application. Brian?
Brian Belk, Axiom. I'll just touch on really two main points that I've heard here with regards to engineering. First and foremost, certainly happy to, to convey as well as I'm sure will already get conveyed, but work with city staff, public works, engineering and traffic, both in terms of the discussion, certainly with Benton Street as a whole, but as well as crossings along Benton Street there as well. I have no, no issues with that, nor do I think Oaknoll has any issues with that either, certainly in their best interest for safety as well.
Yeah, but see, like, Oaknoll's a major employer and it seems like this is, if there's every time, this needs to be investigated, if we're asking staff to cross the street to go to work.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, nope, not, not an issue at all. We'll certainly follow up on that. And then in regards to the parking, I guess in that same breadth, I don't think they have any, they wouldn't reject adding more parking there either. To be honest with you, we tried to keep the parking, again, remember, it's just a concept drawing, this isn't the site plan, that would really get into the depths of that. But in terms of, on the concept plan, that parking was somewhat, if you want to say, limited, or really, it's just not limited. It's based on anticipated use with their history of what skilled nursing and nursing facilities require and need based on what they've seen over the many years, as well as just trying to limit the amount of impervious area and impact to the property as a whole in terms of a footprint. So certainly if, you know, looking at some additional parking, they're not against that. Again, Oaknoll is not. We could, we could move that house a little bit forward, get some additional parking in there, similar area where the concept shows it. That's not a problem at all. Like I said, this, it was conceptual in, in nature. And we do have another handicap stall there as well as a space that could be in front of the garage, I'll note. So really, there's more like seven shown on that concept versus five.
I just think two-fold reasons. I think it's the, the sense of the commission that you're a little light on parking. And also listening to the other people who spoke at the public hearing, parking is already an issue around there during times, so we don't want to add to that.
Sure, nope, you bet. We, yeah, definitely can look into that further. And as noted too, you know, we, we need to go through that code process with the site plan as well, just to make sure we're first meeting the code and then can go from there.
And then I don't know if it'd be a condition, but is there some kind, are you folks going to do a landscape plan with this or?
Yeah, yeah, that would always go with that site plan as well. And again, certainly the, the desire, and that was really pointed out by Oaknoll and directed that way to us, and then, and Jack certainly did a great job with fitting this drawing into that, that we made sure we positioned that house there to keep as many of those, those beautiful trees as we can, so. But then additional landscaping will go with that as well, based on the site plan and the zoning.
But still, you know, again, I go back to, we hope this project, if it's approved, that it moves ahead and it gets completed. But, you know, if we're putting a condition on, I want it to be for whatever project would potentially come to this piece of property.
Yeah, understood. I can tell you that as soon, if this thing were to get approved, as soon as that does, Jack and I are in a very tight timeframe to get this thing designed because they want to get building on it. So just speaking for Oaknoll, but they could speak to that better than I. Any other questions I can handle from the engineering side, though?
Thanks, Brian.
All right, thank you.
Kim, Steve, Jack? Actually, I can't ask anybody to come up, so I should want to. Any other member of the public like to address the commission on this rezoning application?
I guess I might have had all my comments in the, in the, not necessarily the best format, or rather, I guess maybe most of those comments should have been saved for this particular.
It still informed us, so we appreciate that very much.
Okay, I still object. And I also would like to say that I think adding, if you are talking about adding more parking spaces, that is going to change the feel, it's going to start to look like a commercial zone and not a residential neighborhood. And I still oppose this plan adamantly. I think you're changing the neighborhood and I'm rather disappointed that nobody else seems to be concerned about that. Thank you.
Can you please state your name for the record again?
Jordan Conrad.
Thank you, Jordan. Is there anybody else that'd like to address the commission on this application? Second call? Anybody like to come back for the second time around for a two-minute time limit? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Could I have a motion on this application, please?
So moved.
Motion by Townsend. Is there a second? Second by Wade. Discussion?
I'd like to make an amendment. Would you, I'll tell you, I just scribbled this down, it could change, but to include in the conditions that structure may not exceed one story and city approval is required for a landscaping plan that preserves as much existing mature landscaping as possible.
Is that language that works for you folks?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay. Is, since you made the motion, do you accept that?
Acceptable.
Jen, you on board with that additional condition?
If consensus is, I think it introduces a additional complexity that might not necessarily be applicable, so. So does that mean I got to do yes to move it forward?
Well, I think technically by Robert's rule, we only need approval by the person who made the motion, but out of courtesy, we want the motioner and the seconder to both be on board with it?
I'll, I'll second it.
All right.
Thanks, Wade.
All right, any discussion on this item? We got a motion and a second?
I'm sorry, so that include, these are in addition to the staff recommended condition? Okay.
Any discussion? Scott? Susan? Jen? Okay, we got a motion, second, all in favor of the approval of this application, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the motion is approved 5 to 0. Thank you for that condition. Our next item on the agenda is item number seven, consideration of meeting minutes for November, November 15th, 2023. Does anybody have any major additions or corrections to those minutes as published?
Shortest minutes to that. Be short meeting.
Could we have a motion by Craig? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Townsend. Discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those with approval, voting in favor of approval of November 15 minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, motion is approved 5 to 0. Number eight, planning and zoning information. Anne?
Just a few things. The city council did adopt the two zoning code amendments that the commission has seen recently. All of the housing code amendments, I think I mentioned that maybe at the last meeting, but also the accessory dwelling unit amendments were passed with the commission's recommendation to maintain the owner occupancy requirement.
That passed?
It did, yes. It may be coming back, but we haven't been directed to bring it back to the commission at this point.
And Tuesday night, what's, the issue's the height?
Yeah, Tuesday night is the consult to discuss the RNS12 maximum height from 35 feet to 27 feet.
Are you going to send us the information on that? I presume the city council had, just so we can be accurate in our conversation, or should we just read the?
Do you want me to send you the staff report in minutes? Would that be helpful? Okay.
I would like that.
Yep.
Okay. Do you know, are we gonna, I know we don't need a quorum for that, but do you know who's going to be able to attend?
Everyone except two people.
Maria probably.
Maria won't be there and Scott, you'll be on vacation.
Yeah, I'm going to be out of town.
Yeah, so five people will be there.
Very good. All right, anything else, Anne?
That's it.
Anybody on the commission have any planning and zoning information?
I was have, I just have a question. And it boggles my mind every time I drive up Kimball Road where Ellen Deter used to live. They knocked down that house and I'm sure they got a building permit for something. But there's been this crane for the past three, four months just sitting there. So is there?
Is this down by Gilbert and Kimball?
Well, no, this is on Kimball Road. As you're coming up Kimball Road, right in that bend.
Okay.
They've torn down the house and it just looked like it was sitting on a slope. But they've got a crane that's like 12 feet down. I can't see how they're ever going to get it up because there's a big fall, you know, a big slope under that. So are they, are they building there or?
We do have a building permit application for a house on Kimball Road. If you want to send me the address, I can.
There is no address, the house.
Yeah, okay.
Was there, is gone. I can send you the addresses on either side.
Okay, yeah. It's probably the same site that we're thinking, that I'm thinking of.
I'm just curious how they're going to, number one, get that crane out and how they're going to put another house in that spot.
Yeah, yeah. It's a steeply sloping site, but.
Any other?
Amazing what they can do when they want.
It's pretty amazing.
I think so.
Kimball's a tough place to build.
Kimball's a tough place. Talk about traffic and getting across the street. They tore the house down.
Do you have anything?
And the garage was just there for the longest.
I may be tentative for the 12, I let Anne know.
Okay.
That's a work time.
Okay, so plus or minus at this point?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it wasn't even on the ground. But we don't need a quorum or anything, because we're not voting on anything.
We're just there to share our wisdom.
And it's been there for months.
All right. Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Motion by Townsend, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Quellhorst. Discussion? All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, we're adjourned. Rule 5 to 0.